Marley, are we ready? Excellent. I call this work session to begin. With that, definitely, Councilmember Hills, as an administration liaison, I'd love for you to say a few words, but really, really just excited to see the presentation so that this entire council can get up to speed. And just, I think, a good opportunity to hopefully move us forward with the right culture, et cetera, within the city of Roswell. So, Councilmember Hills, would you like to say any words?
Sure. Thank you for being here. Thank you all of the helpers, the workers, the doers, the busy bees, the pretending like you're not busy, but you really have been. So, thank you. Thank you for that. I personally feel like, as a resident, just a short time ago, a part of my heart has been missing in Roswell. And we'll get to all those over the next four years or whatever. But this is definitely a piece that I feel like we need to discuss and consider and see if we can pick up the paintbrushes and get back to the palette. So, anyway, I am excited to hear what you all have to share with us this evening. And I'm going to give it to you. Gila? Ilan?
There we go. It's green. Hello, everybody. So, thank you, first of all, to council for inviting us to give a presentation on public art. We are very excited to start this conversation and hope that this is the beginning of an ongoing discussion that we will have in reviewing the public art program and then moving forward together to really push the vision for the administration for City of Roswell and use public art as a leverage. So, we have, I believe, about 90 minutes together tonight. And so, and maybe it will be shorter than that, but I can't make any promises. What we are envisioning here as a structure is a 20-minute presentation where we're going to go over the history of the public art program in City of Roswell. We'll take a look at some of our neighbors and other cities and what they're doing in the landscape of public art. And then, we will talk about opportunities and priorities and next steps for Roswell Arts Fund, as well as for City Council and our collaboration. I hope that we can keep all of the questions through the end of the presentation. Again, I'm hoping that the presentation will be about 20 minutes and then we'll have all of the rest of the time to really start a discussion and take plenty of notes together. And I think that's about it. We'll be presenting together with Ilan Buken, the Public Art Manager for Roswell Arts Fund. And again, I wanted to thank everybody around this table for taking the time to start a conversation, or to continue a conversation, rather, about public art. This is very exciting. Welcome to all of the new faces around this table. And thank you again for all of the energy that you're bringing and the positive approach. So, jumping right in, I'm going to start with a quote by Jan Gel, who is a Danish architect and urban planner. And Jan Gel said, "A good city is like a good party. People stay longer than really necessary because they are enjoying themselves." And I think we all know that feeling very well. We know it when we are at a good event and we stay way past what we anticipated. And we know it when we go and travel around and visit new cities. There's something about the energy that you find in new places and the way you feel welcome and the excitement that you get by discovering everything that is around you. In a way, a city represents itself through its public spaces. And so, we all know that feeling very well. You know that feeling really more than anybody because I can really safely say that that's why you're all here, that your decision to run for office and really get involved with City of Roswell comes from the place of wanting City of Roswell to be not just that good city, but the best city it can be. And so, that is something that ties everybody here together. And I think, again, it's a very exciting moment as we explore what that looks like. And so, that's the next step. So, we know that we want a good city, a great city, or the best city. What are the qualities, really, that make up a great space? And so, it turns out, we're not alone in this quest for the great space. There is an organization called Project for Public Spaces that has been around for about four decades. And it has worked with over 3,500 communities around the globe. It's present in over 50 countries and in all 50 United States. And it works with communities to really imagine their futures and take a good look at what a good public space looks like. And so, what they have boiled it down to over these four decades are four components. They talk about access and linkage. They talk about comfort and image, uses and activities, and sociability. And so, we're going to briefly go around the circle. And again, it goes from the outside in. And I'm just going to point out a few things, and you will recognize them because really, a lot of the words that we're using here are words that you are intimately familiar with because really, they're very present in the culture of City of Roswell already. So, you'll be thinking about a lot of things that are already present. And maybe it will give you some ideas for other things that we can bring in. So, access and linkage. What we're talking here is, is the place easy to find and easy to navigate? You know, we're thinking in terms of transportation. We're thinking in terms of parking, walkability. And we all know City of Roswell has an incredible park system. And certainly, our paths are something that we are incredibly proud of. And so, the question here is, again, you know, are we connecting our spaces? Are we making them easily accessible, easily to find and to navigate? Wayfinding would be another thing. Comfort and image. And here, we ask, is this a place where you feel welcome? Does it feel safe? Is it comfortable? Is it suitable, which is a new word for me, but it really conveys a message. When you get to a place and you want to stay there, are there places where you can sit down and really enjoy and experience the place? Is it attractive and historic? Is it really celebrating its history? And again, I can say for a fact that that's all very present here in City of Roswell when we're thinking about our historic homes and the culture, really, that comes out of the city. And then, activities and usage. And here is where we really think in terms of live, work, and play. This is where you think about residents and also homegrown businesses and tourism. Are we doing everything that we can to attract homegrown businesses, again, tourists, and providing services to residents? And here, again, I would say that there are a lot of things that Roswell is already doing very well in the Recreation and Parks Department, particularly, I think, falls into this area where it's really thinking in terms of providing services to the citizens of Roswell, but also in terms of bringing tourism in and highlighting our businesses. And then, finally, sociability. And this is where we ask, you know, is this a place where you want to gather and continue to gather over and over again? Is this a place where you want to come back to with family and friends? Do you have opportunities to interact with your neighbors? And so, here, I think of all of the festivals that happen in Roswell on a very regular basis, as well as alive in Roswell, and all of the music opportunities that are popping up everywhere, both offered by City of Roswell and also a lot of different organizations including Roswell Arts Fund. And so, again, all of these four categories are things that, when you put together, that's where you create a good place, a good city, that not only speaks to its residents, but it shows the world how it reflects itself and really the culture that it represents.
Thank you, Gila. So, we talk about, thank you, leveraging public art. That's always the question, is substantiating the value of public art and how to pay for it. Talking about what value does art have for the public and how is it integrated? And art has been described as an anchor. Art has been described as like the glue. And art truly is the link between all these different place facets. Art is our culture. It is the manifestation, a physical manifestation of our own humanity. And it is the means through which we engage in our public spaces. If you look at any of these categories, it's using arts that are able to kind of transmute between category to category. You go to a space and you have a visual landmark. You have greater safety from more people in the space, more eyeballs in use. You have greater advertisement by virtue of its attraction and so forth and so on. So, there's so many different ways that the arts become critical in the different disciplines of space-making. We take a look at a sampling of other municipalities, other ways they've tackled some of these placemaking activities. This is by no means comprehensive. This is meant to be a diverse outlook or sort of a portfolio of ideas and basis for conversation. If we look at, for example, the city of Atlanta, they have just under $300,000 committed in FY '21. Those are project dollars. Those are not inclusive of salary or legal or administrative and what have you. They also have over $3 million under contract for their percent for art and construction commission projects. These are multi-year contracts. Their percent for art, I should mention, it's important to mention that a percent for art program goes towards a universal fund. It is not that a percent of a given project, if that makes any sense. So, if you have a $100,000 project, a 1% of that does not go towards that project itself, but rather goes to the collective hold to be used as the municipality needs merit. Sawani has a completely different system. They have two employee salaries covered plus a percentage of parks rental fees, ticket sales from Beer and Wine Festival, about $25,000 per year. They do have a mandatory meeting for all private developers as part of their permitting process with the Public Art Commission. But their percent for art program is non-mandated. It is voluntary in nature for private developers. They'd had a very interesting study done in 2017 with the construction of their town center, where they found that if they looked at the same real estate, the same location, for producing a big box retailer like a Publix or a supermarket, they found that their tax revenue was more than 38% different and higher if they went to the construction they ended up with, which was an amphitheater, green space, fully activated public space in addition to their town center proper. Dunwoody, again, different outlook, nascent in their approaches. They're investing $50,000. And then Augusta, investing $100,000, building their programming on the best practices established here in Roswell and Art Around Roswell. So, taking a look at some of our history and how we got to be where we are today. Gila, take it away.
So, this slide wants to be just a snapshot of where we began, where we are now, and how do we move forward. A couple of things to notice. First of all, you will see the bottom half of the slide talks about policies and infrastructure. And the top part of the slide talks about initiatives. Roswell Arts Fund, or actually, the public art program started with the Imagine Roswell 2030 Arts and Culture Plan that gave way to the creation of Roswell Arts Fund and actually, an art council that became Roswell Arts Fund. So, Roswell Arts Fund was established in 2014 and became the designated art agency for City of Roswell in 2015. You will see up on top, all of the initiatives I wanted to mention, they are ongoing. And so, you will see, for example, Art Around Roswell is mentioned in the 2016-17 slot. That's when it started, in 2016, and then it continues on to today and hopefully, forward in the future as well. And that's true also for the bike rack project, Roswell Imprint, the Papa performances, and really, all of the initiatives that we put together. So, these were not one-offs, but they were projects that started and continue on. As far as the planning at the bottom, there are a few things to highlight. The Public Art Master Plan that was managed by Roswell Arts Fund on behalf of City of Roswell. It was completed in 2016 and presented to council at the beginning of 2017. And it was accepted, but not adopted by the city. At the same time, Roswell Arts Fund put together a performance space study in three phases. Phases one and two happened again in 2016-17. The last phase was in 2019, and it was presented in 2019 to City Council. In 2020, together with Jeff Leatherman and the Recreation and Parks Department, we worked on the adoption of public art policy and the public art donation policy. And here we are in 2022. And so, what we wanted to briefly look at, and these are things that we will touch a little bit later when we talk about next steps, but really, what comes out of this snapshot from a planning point of view is there are some low-hanging fruit here. And so, there's been a lot of work that has already been done. About 90% of the work really has been done regarding the Public Art Master Plan. It was commissioned, already paid for, already put together. And then, it fell short of the adoption. And so, as we are looking at really structuring a public art program that is sustainable and continues on in the future, that is something that we hope to revisit and review it, first of all, and provide a timeline and also an understanding of where we are with it so far. And so, we can have a conversation about where to move from there. Same thing goes with the performance art space. The first three phases were done, which included a site analysis. It would be great to move forward with a location plan and so that we can continue the conversation and move it to the future so that when, if it's decided that we can go ahead with it and we want to launch a capital campaign, we have much better plans and, again, you know, location assessments. As far as initiatives, again, here very briefly, you will see a lot of initiatives that you are familiar with and that we'll be talking about later. Since 2016, we've been implementing a lot of different initiatives, both in sculptural work, functional art, like the bike racks. We have launched a number of new initiatives starting in 2020, really in response to the pandemic, but then realizing that some of these things were very much the persecution of the implementation of the Public Art Master Plan. So, Roswell Imprint, for example, is one of those that started as a three-part outdoor photography exhibition. And it was installed in four different locations, including the Roswell Boardwalk. One part is in collaboration with MARTA, and it was in the bus shelters, primarily along Holcomb Bridge Road. And so, trying to make art as accessible as possible and changing the narrative a little bit and give opportunities to everybody to engage with the arts and have a positive impact. So, a couple of financial slides. And these don't need a whole lot of explanation, but when the public art program started in collaboration between Roswell Arts Fund and City of Roswell, we took the commitment to really become more independent from a financial standpoint. And I wanted to show what the trends are, sorry, in FY '16 all the way to FY '21. These are the fiscal years that have already been completed. We are in the middle of FY '22, and I can tell you a little bit about the trends there. But the things to notice here, this is support coming from grants, individual donations, and sponsorships. And you can see that we have steadily gone up in all three categories. Sponsorships kind of flatlined a little bit in FY '21 and then really picked up in FY '22. We are halfway through the year and almost double where we were at the end of last year. And that's due to the fact that we have introduced new initiatives that give opportunities for local businesses and companies to sponsor. And so, we had the Boku Jazz and Blues Festival, for example, being one. Roswell Imprint is another, and the Papa performances. So, all of those, all of the things that we introduced starting in 2020 have been completely supported privately. So, Roswell Imprint, the Papa performances, the Boku Festival, the pop-in performances, all of those initiatives were paid for through private support. And then, this is a quick snapshot of the support coming from City of Roswell, again, through the years. And it is fairly self-explanatory. I will say, again, FY '20 and '21 have been very difficulty years for everybody. And so, there's clearly an understanding that this was a time of great uncertainty. There were a lot of priorities that needed to be taken into consideration. So, and this is actually something that, you know, we see all across the board. So, certainly, City of Roswell is not alone. I will say, you can see different approaches in other cities. There are places that have decided to invest more in public art because they saw it as a means to recovery. And so, we're really hoping tonight to start a conversation so that this becomes an anomaly rather than a trend and that we can continue to really strengthen the partnership and make the public art program really a tool for recovery and growth for City of Roswell.
So, despite some of the adversity that we certainly all felt, that we were able to advance a number of initiatives, and Gila's mentioned them, that are in accordance with the Public Art Master Plan. And so, this is a sampling of some of the accomplishments alongside what the findings were from that master plan and that we've still been able to advance. For example, Roswell Imprint was from create a sense of joy, a sense of surprise and joy in unexpected places. Here, you see it installed just adjacent to City Hall here in the Cops of Trees. Non-invasive to the environment, installed in a number of unexpected places, local and visiting photographers, even nationally renowned, available for print, for sale of prints online. They celebrate and enhance parks and city centers. Of course, flagship project, Art Around Roswell. Successful long-term loan sculptural works on 10 pads located throughout the city. Inspiring health and activity with art in our parks. The functional art program, these bike racks made by sculptors, but still up to snuff by the permanent use as functional bike racks for the years to come. And then, looking at even some new test programs, like the Transform Everyday Infrastructure Into Works of Art. You see that Power Box by Christina Kwan here, kind of a test initiative that we hope to see more of. Capturing Imagination Through Performance. The pop-in performances were built, we had a mobile stage we took to senior centers and other communities disproportionately affected by the pandemic and bringing those moments of joy and imagination, trying to capture it in a bottle for people during those tough times. And then, stimulating economic activity and tourism, launching such new initiatives like the Boku Jazz and Blues Festival, brought to East Village in this past year. So, we talked a little bit about all of these great opportunities. But also, we talked about how do we accomplish them? And then, ultimately, a critical question being sometimes, how do you pay for them? It's really important to mention, obviously, public-private partnerships are, the P3s are always touted. Those are partnerships with utilities, watershed management, so forth, gateways and art districts, these kinds of things. The partnership opportunities come about prior to procurement. So, often, we get, we're going to engage the arts fund after we've got design. Or once we get to 90%, then we'll bring in the arts fund. Or once we have some design discussion, then we'll actually take this further in talking about how to integrate arts. But those are all cost adds. But those are all cost adds. Those are all, you've already established your budget, you've got your design-build contract, now how do we integrate art? Bringing it prior to procurement, prior to the actual conception of the idea, allows you to stay consistent in budget from the beginning. So for example, if you have a retention pond issue, but you're already integrating the arts, you have that from when your budget and your design-build, your RFQ goes out, how that's going to be integrated. And we do that by adopting that Public Art Master Plan, adopting a percent-for-art policy or funding system, and the creating of those internal processes, making sure that we're integrated as part of that design process early, early on, to make sure it's a zero-cost alternative.
So after looking at all of this, so how do we get there? We have two quick slides. One is procedural next steps, and the other one is work session next steps. So procedural next steps, we're looking at these three different buckets, and really it's all integrated. We would like to take a good look at the Public Art Master Plan, review it, and then present recommendation for review and timeline and eventually adoption, and then present an updated proposal for percent of the arts or a funding strategy. From City Council, the first thing that we would love to see is the appointment, bless you, is the appointment of a liaison to Roswell Arts Fund. And this is really a great way for us to be consistently talking and exploring possibilities so that we can serve the vision for City of Roswell as best as we can, and we are in alignment as we propose and implement public art projects. And the other two things are going back to our first part. And so one is, you know, once we present a proposal for review and timeline for the Public Art Master Plan, we would like to ask council to take that into consideration and vote on our adoption, and then review the proposed percent-for-the-art policy and work together on that as well. And this is something that we would like to do, again, with the city administration as well, both for the percent-for-the-art policy, and then also work with Roswell Arts Fund to create internal processes for the integration of public art into the design. This is, again, just an opportunity to have those consistent points of contact so that we can be a resource for City of Roswell and come in when things are being discussed and projects are just starting rather than as an add-on later on. And then for the work session next steps, and we are here, is really to talk about what's coming up next. So FY23 is in the works, and we would like to have an opportunity today to really talk about some of the things that can happen this year. So, you know, as we're looking at a long-term project, but really, where do we want to start? We have some ideas of things that we would like to propose, but this is really a baseline, some ideas that we have that are for your consideration, and really, we want to make sure that we are working together to sustain your vision for City of Roswell and leverage public art to make that all happen. And then finally, we have some resources. And again, this is a presentation that we will leave with everybody, and these are links to a number of resources that we have on our website, including the Public Art Master Plan, the Imagine Roswell 2030 Study, and then Perform an Art feasibility Study, some resources we have for private developers. And the Artist's Around the Table Lookbook, which is a really great example of a conversation that happened a few years ago, and some of the ideas that came out of this meeting of the minds between city departments and artists. And with that, there are a couple of things, actually, I need to go back for one second. One is that I forgot to mention that over the years, and particularly with Art Around Roswell and the Bike Rack Project, we have created the beginning of a permanent collection for City of Roswell. And so over the years, there's been about, in value, about $200,000 worth of assets that have been transferred back to City of Roswell. And so that is something to keep in mind, because again, this is not just money spent, but it's actually assets that come back to the city for the enjoyment of all of the residents. And then, I think that's about it. Yes, that is our...
Question, discussion?
That is our 20 minutes, or maybe a little bit more. So thank you all. Oh, the other thing, I wanted to acknowledge, actually, everybody who's here today. We have a great representation from the Board of Roswell Arts Fund, Scott Hitch, who is the board chair, is here, and a lot of other board members, Rochelle Muka, who's the chair of the advisory board. And so, again, I wanted to thank everybody, and they will be great resources as we start our discussion to provide some historical context and thoughts.
That's great. Could actually, could everyone on the board, could you introduce yourself really, really quick? Not a bio, just your name, just would love, just appreciate you all coming here.
Mike Harris.
Rochelle Muka.
Amy White.
Scott Hitch.
Zin Russell.
Lawrence Ketchell.
Thank you.
Kate Parker.
Excellent. Thank you. So definitely, definitely appreciate, I know a lot of, a lot of time and effort goes in, goes into all that you're doing, and also, so definitely appreciate the presentation and really the graphs that you showed, you know, the increase, increase in, you know, grant money and other money that you all have worked so hard to secure. I certainly have some, some comments that I'd like to discuss for, regarding the Public Arts Master Plan, but I'd first love the opportunity for anyone on, anyone on council, any, any questions or comments that you have.
I have a terrible poker face, so I want it all. I want all of it. So I'm a dreamer, now you know, and a lot of my dreams come true because I'm a pusher too. Then I have to go to my people that know how to operate a person, a budget, so I'm looking around the room, and I know we've got plenty of those. Can you, can you talk a little bit about how you had gotten and what it looked like? And it doesn't have to be exact, but with some of your business sponsorships for some of the things that you had done and how that worked? I know we're looking at another more ongoing, permanent income stream, so I'm aware of that need, and that's noodling right around in here. And you had mentioned the, with the pop-up art, the prints that were out on display that are available online. If you can include that, just did we, we being you, receive any income from that?
Yes, sure. So thank you for that question. So yes, sponsorships is something that has been going on really since the very beginning. And so, and as a matter of fact, one thing that I didn't mention is that for the most part, the initiatives that we put together are never really fully funded by City of Roswell. There's always a partnership between funding coming from City of Roswell and a contribution coming from individuals and sponsorships and, and again, now grants. And the reason, and you were council member, you were mentioning the grants, the reason we were able to be much more successful with grants, with grants writing and also acquiring grants since 2020 really, is because we now finally have the eligibility and all of the things that we need to be eligible to obtain grants. We have a paid professional staff, we have more than three years in good standing, and then we have local support, which is really something that a lot of private foundation particularly are looking at. And so those are important things to know, because all of these three aspects are things that we need to continue if we want to continue to apply for grants. And as far as sponsorship, so Art Around Roswell is the, is the one program that started that to begin with. When it started, the, there were 10 sculptors and 10 sponsors who each sponsored one piece of art specifically, and the sponsorship went directly to pay artist fees. And so, so that's how it all started. And then we have been growing from there. So the Bike Rack Project followed a very similar pattern. As I mentioned before, all of the things that we introduced since 2020 have been completely privately sponsored, and so Roswell Imprint had support from public businesses, not public, private, local businesses. And also, we had the opportunity, again, to, for example, sell some of the prints that were on display. 70% of that went back to the artist, which also gave us a great opportunity to really sustain the artist at a time when they were facing great difficulties, and at the same time, bring in some revenue for operations for Roswell Arts Fund. And then same things went on for the, for the concerts, both the pop-up performances and the pop-in performances. Again, the pop-in performances is a program where we brought music to the parking lots of senior living facilities during 2020 and 2021. It was a very low-cost budget and really a work of passion and a lot of heart. And I have to give a shout-out to Amy White, who is here, for helping put that together. And again, that all came through private donations and sponsorships, and we were able to provide a service for free to our senior residents through that. So, so we're trying to, again, come up with a number of different revenue sources, and sponsorships are very much part of that. We now have a sponsorship packet that is inclusive of all of the programs, and so businesses who come in as sponsors now are recognized throughout all of our initiatives. So in, throughout the year and throughout all of the initiatives, whether it's concerts, sculptures, bike racks, and all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. First one is going to be for Ryan Luckett, our finance director. So Ryan, typically, how have we funded the Arts Fund in the past? Is it through the hotel motel tax and excise tax, or is it from the general fund?
Most of it's been through the general funds, with the exception, I believe, of the, this year's contribution for the Art Around program, which came from fund balance within our hotel motel fund.
And so are we able to fund them from the hotel motel and excise tax fund in the future?
We are allowed to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for you. And for you, Gilah, what, the City of Canton, have you looked at their program? And just to follow a question, and then I'll be quiet. As far as what is the focus on using local artists and local, like our makerspace and resources like that? So.
So I'm going to start by saying I have not had, I don't have much experience with the program in Canton, so I will be looking at that for sure.
They, they have a big focus on this, so.
Yeah.
Just curious what their spends were.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. We reached out, the sample that you saw in the slide is not comprehensive. We reached out to a number of other neighboring cities, and we are in constant contact. And so, you know, hopefully, we will get some more information that we can present to you, but I will be, I will be looking at Canton as well. And as far as local artists for us, we have another thing that we actually did this year that I did not mention is the, is the artist marketplace. We have an online artist marketplace that is really catering to highlighting local artists. And so it's almost like a hyper-local Etsy in a way, where we have local artists who can use that to sell all of their products. And again, we are, we're setting up a makerspace online. And then we also have a makerspace in presence. For example, when we had the Boku Jazz and Blues Festival, part of that was a pop-up art village, so we had over 40 local artists who came and set up their booths and actually did quite well that day selling their crafts and art to the public. And so we are, again, constantly in touch with them to see when other opportunities arise for that.
I'd also like to add on the, on the local artist quality, defining local, you can have local in terms of their studio location, you can also specify local in terms of their materials. So for example, you might say, we could specify sourcing materials within a 250-mile radius, or local being that their studio space has to be within a certain radius space. So there are a lot of ways that we can define local for the what program they're going to participate in. For example, Art Around, we do see a lot of predominant participation from the Southeast United States, because carting around big, large sculpture isn't typical to go transverse the nation. However, we do see some participation, and this year, we've got some, some interesting people who are willing to come down from Canada if they get in. But anyway, so that hyper-locality, I think, is really interesting, and I'm seeing a trend of more programs doing it as experiments. And then it's just specifying what of importance is for us as they living here, them sourcing their materials here, or they're selling here, you know, how we qualify them as locals.
So question I have, or more actually, probably discussion, is regarding, so I definitely see the benefit and the value and do, do really like the idea of us, of us working hard to have a, have a plan that's, that's truly executed. And, and you know, actually, an example I love is certainly the activation of the path through the city hall. I certainly was at that ribbon cutting and certainly enjoyed seeing all those prints, and I think I certainly saw a lot of residents or, or customers of our downtown that were certainly enjoying as well. So I certainly see a lot of different, different benefits, and obviously, the big discussion is the funding. Where's, where's, where's the money going to come from? And certainly, although the hotel motel tax certainly has the ability to go towards the arts, it's, that's, that's a fund that's pulled, or those are dollars that are pulled thin because they go towards CVB, they go towards economic development, they go towards trails, they go towards historic homes, et cetera. So, so it, as I, as I look at it, of course, you have in the master plan, you have the, let's see, the, the...
Percent for Art.
Yes, the percent for art. And that is something that I, that I think with, it was my interpretation, that multiple previous councils, that was a, that was a, that was a concern, where basically what was proposed was a 2% tax on new development going towards, towards arts, if I understood that correctly. So, so how would you, how would you describe it? Because I saw the project expend a minimum of 2% of the building construction costs on artwork accessible to the public. How, how would you describe this for discussion?
Yeah, so first of all, and thank you for that question. So the percent for the arts has two components. One is for public construction, and so when you're looking at the 2%, is 1.5% going to public, public art coming from, from public projects? And then, and then half of a percentage would go to maintenance of the, of the permanent collection, which is also something else that we would like to discuss at some point. And then from a private developer's standpoint, there is no mandatory contribution at all. And in fact, the one thing that we would really love to discuss is, is really a model like Swanee, where there's a mandatory meeting that really doesn't cost anybody anything, because developers are only agreeing to sit down with the Arts Fund and explore opportunities. And then if they're interested in working together, then great. In a lot of cases, I think they are interested because it also goes to brand, not only the development, but unify that with City of Roswell, and there is an understanding that a lot of developers coming into Roswell do that because they want to align themselves with the overall vision of the city. And so there are opportunities, again, there to work together, but there's, there's no mandatory requirement.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, because you went where I was going to go with my question too, when you showed us Swanee and showing it was, it was, it was not mandatory. So I think that's, that's very helpful for the discussion. I'd say, I still, even for public projects, just knowing the backlog and the financial situation that we, that we have, I'd say I somewhat have some concerns there. That being said, actually, in one of the conversations I had with the mayor, who of course wishes he could, he could be here right now, he did actually have, have an idea on a potential consistent revenue, revenue stream where perhaps some of that could be going towards. So I think there are certainly possibilities on where we look at, where, where could that funding make sense? And it's just, I wanted to just kind of state really for this council, as well as to share with you and the board, that I'd say I have a little, little concern with, with my interpretation of the percent of art, but I certainly am supportive of finding, finding revenue opportunities and consistent ones to be able to forecast properly, et cetera. Yes. Yeah, please come up.
Thank you. Mike Harris. So when you think about a percent for art, I think about what Fulton County does. You don't, I think we're looking at it, your concern sounded to me like it was taking something away from a project, when in fact, it actually becomes a part of the project. So if you're going to spend... So if you're going to spend a million dollars on a new building, you'll say, okay, then 1.5% of that budget will go towards public art. It doesn't take anything away from the project. That means if you're going to build a wall, that wall could be structured as an art piece. You see what I'm saying? So I think what the city has to do is to get beyond what costs money and look at what generates money, what generates public access and accessibility and interest. We can have flat buildings all over Roswell. I mean, one thing that people always complain about is they don't want it vanilla, right? So if we can do public projects, and I think that's really the right way to do it. If we can, say, if the city's going to build a park or expand a road, if there's something that we can do in that budget that could cost $30,000, and that's really what public art really is, it's pennies, when you really get down to it. But it tells the public what you are. You're an artsy, hip town. You're a town that cares about culture and art. So everybody knows us for our historical assets, and that's great. But there are many people who will never walk in them, right? So what do we do to engage people that would never do that? And I think this is one way to do it. The funding's there. The city's spending money every day. So if you're going to spend money, think of a way to use part of that budget to do something that creates public art and sustains public art.
Excellent, thank you for that clarification. Sure, before you do, I just want to make sure, any council members have any other thoughts or reactions?
Hi, everyone. Oh, did I turn it on? Oh, thank you so much. Okay, they didn't have these in the day when I was here. Okay, so this is new, I like it. Microphone, I like it. Okay, let's just cut to the chase. I mean, I think that one of the things, Councilmember Palermo, to keep in mind is that when we open the session with what makes for a good place, and we all like a good place, and we all go back to a good place, because it's someplace we want to be when we travel or locally. And just like with everything else, it costs money. So funding is a very key part. It's like the dinosaur in the room. You cannot have great art anywhere without funding. And funding is not a single track, it's a multi-pronged thing. So funding for the arts, for great art, for cities that want to embrace art and integrate art into their fabric of who they are, funding for that will come from many places. It'll come from grants, it'll come from individual donors, it will come from business and sponsors, and it will come from the municipality. So the, and when we talk about whether it's a percent for art from the city capital projects or a percent for art for a commercial project, it's all part of the funding pot. And it should be part of a larger strategic vision of how does art show up in your community? How does art speak to people who visit here? How does art speak to the residents? And it's a continuum. There's little baby projects, there's a, the utility box, there's iconic art, which we don't have. And then there's the art that we have made permanent through Art Around. So the question I'm encouraging all of you is not to get wrapped around an individual stream, but to rally around a shared vision first. And then you'll figure out where the funding comes from, because it's not rocket science. It's very commonplace, and great cities have been doing it a while. So I'm just going to encourage you, rally around the new energy in the room, rally around a new elected governing system, rally around new staff, and rally around a new chapter, new opportunity to resuscitate what we started in 2014, and define how you want it to be in your city. Not a project, not a funding source and what we can do with it, but rather the whole thing. It's my two cents after three years. Should I shut this thing off?
I definitely appreciate the discussion. Any other questions for the Roswell Arts Fund or related to the plan?
I'd love to echo what you just said. And first of all, thank you both for all of the energy you just brought to this room and the enthusiasm you have for the arts. The enthusiasm beyond the arts is the enthusiasm for the City of Roswell. And that's what we're all sharing. And I want to assure you that this council, we are establishing a vision for this city, and you will be included in that vision.
Excellent. So I think we're well ahead of the 90 minutes that you've allotted.
Well, I was going to say, the next step, and we've been charged, is to update the percent for art language, to update the Public Art Master Plan language, and resubmit that for council consideration. So if that seems like a good next step, yes, please.
I think you need to update the plan itself and the timeline and some of those items as well.
You're absolutely right, yeah. Reevaluating the timeline, bringing all that before council for approval would be the logical next step for us to proceed. So I think if we can agree that's the next step, then that'll be certainly that item off the list and on to us to put our heads back down on the books, get things figured out.
Yeah, Councilmember Eels?
Yes, I've talked with a couple of you over the last month or so. And I just wanted to go on record that I was asking what, where this had fallen apart in the past. And I'm not here to point any fingers, but we came to an agreement, I believe, that it was, for lack of a cheerleader, maybe within the council, this mayor and council, or past. And you have that now. I will, again, I will echo, echo, echo what's going on. And I'll speak for the mayor, that we are definitely on board. And this is something that's going to be a reality. I do want to say that we, and you'll hear more in the meeting if you stay for city council meeting, but we've got a retreat planned. And when I say retreat, that doesn't mean cucumbers on the eyes and massages or, you know, hairdos and that sort of thing. It'll be work disguised as a retreat. But to talk about the future of this city and how everything can play a part in the big picture of enjoyment for all of our residents, and that's not just arts, but it will certainly include arts. So I do want to tell you that there are a couple of things that are, will be spawned from this conversation, some we've had in between our meetings about how we pay for it. And I agree, it is a multi-pronged opportunity. I think one of the things that benefits us in this conversation is with being artistic, you have to be creative in how you fund it, as well as how you present it and how you consume it. So that's absolutely within that, or outside of, if we need to be that realm. But that'll be a couple of weeks when we go and discuss a lot of things. You all are part of that big conversation. So this is not a put-off, it's a just hang in, because it's happening. And I think we haven't voted on anything yet, but you're getting the nods, and I'm not going away. And I just want to let you know that you have my support, and I'll let everybody speak for themselves there. But this isn't a tomorrow thing, but it's soon, it's soon.
Thank you.
The other items to bring up for discussion are things that we've talked about briefly, you know, off and on, which is the future of Art Around, for example. Looking at the success of the painted power box downtown, and looking at, is that a project that we want to see replicated and done in a larger way? Because as we're formulating what you do want to see for FY twenty-three, does council have any ideas or directives, or it's just a brainstorming session about the successes we have seen and how to capitalize on them and ways to grow them for not just this coming fiscal year, but the next? And really kind of build a ground, build a trajectory?
We're not trying to hold on to the 90 minutes, but we can take a few more.
No, this is a very helpful discussion. I think it's been very productive. So I certainly don't want to take longer than necessary, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we, that this council gets any and all of their questions or comments out there, as well as just anything else that you feel this council should be aware of prior to the next steps of looking at an updated plan and having a similar discussion within this room with hopefully an action item to move forward with at that point.
Well, so as far as timing goes, we have two different things. There's the updated plan, which we're going to be working on, hopefully, very soon and quickly. And at the same time, as you all know, in about a month, there's the FY twenty-three budget. The requests, I believe, are due exactly a month from now. So we're going to be looking at both things at the same time. And so if there are some opportunities for things that we can discuss, that, you know, you want to see, where we can support really the administration in implementing a vision for City of Roswell through public art, then we would love to have those conversations. We had talked about the path going from city hall to Canton Street as one opportunity. Yes, we had the Roswell Imprint exhibition there. At the time, we had talked about potentially creating some sort of structure that would allow for recurring exhibitions, for example, so that it would become more of a steady path. And really, that's a way, without saying it, to encourage people to park here and walk to Canton Street. And so, again, we would like to take those opportunities to use the arts to do some of the things that are needed without really addressing them straight on. And so that's a really great way to take advantage of what we have over here and the problem that we have just a few feet away, and again, activate that. And the other thing, as Alan was mentioning, is the evolution of Art Around. We had talked about some of the other cities and what they're doing in Augusta. The big difference between what they're doing and what we're doing with Art Around is that they have created clusters of public art sculptures, for example, so that you can have those pedestrian itineraries. And so they become really a tourist attraction, as well as a service for the residents. And so identifying some of those opportunities, maybe places where we want to have some clusters of public art that we can then use to brand the city in a cohesive way would be a really helpful next step.
Makes sense. And interestingly enough, you raised too, we're in the process of having a new shorter crosswalk across Highway Nine. Perhaps the arts could be a great way to be drawing attention to it as we look at people taking that shorter path.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Are there any final comments before we adjourn this meeting? Excellent. So with that, this work session is adjourned. Thank you very much.